I'd like to call to order Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, and in justice for all.
We'll begin our meeting with public participation on agenda items only. So we have quite a large agenda today. If there's anyone who would like to make public comment on any of the agenda items before us. Just noteworthy, we are live streaming and it is a three-minute cap on public participation. Anyone interested in sharing on agenda items only? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the May 28th workshop meeting and the June 4th legislative minutes. Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any conversation? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. For Salary Board, approval of the minutes for Salary Board, June 4th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Controller Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Hagerty.
On Tuesday, June 17th, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding public safety, contract negotiations, and the purchase or lease of real property. District Attorney Chardo and Budget and Finance Director Davis were additionally present.
Any questions of Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none, we'll move on to directors and guests. Cassie Ruschinsky, Salary Board.
Good morning.
Good morning. The Personnel and Salary Board packet are both ready for your approval. There were some revisions that are listed in red. They were communicated with the board.
Yep. Do I have a motion for items A and B of the Salary Board?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving to the Personnel Packet. Do I have a motion for the Personnel Packet under Human Resources? Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Any questions of Cassie before she leaves? Thank you so much. Next up, Budget and Finance Director, Mr. Chris Davis.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out yesterday. There's also no changes to the purchase order packet. That's ready for your approval.
Today, I just have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering if the laboring points, the research contracts, if I can ask that we table. It would be, the first one would be just the first number, VCP 01, 01 through 15.
Okay.
Status of the contract is. VCP 01, 326.
And that's on page four.
Page four, I'm sorry. And I have some other questions I think that can be clarified later, but those are the two that I just want to table for this week until you're able to have a discussion.
Can I entertain a motion for the purchase order packet removing those two items, tabling those two items, but approval of the remainder of the packet? Do I have a motion? Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief Clerk's Report. Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we've got another big agenda with several items requiring board action. One area agency on aging agreement, three MHADP agreements, one drug and alcohol programs agreement, three children and youth agreements, facilities maintenance agreement, and HR agreement with ADP to address employment tax services, two parks and recreation items, residential lease, and IT cloud storage agreement, two items relating to grant applications the county is submitting or has already submitted, one reentry services agreement, renewed insurance coverage for county volunteers at a reduced rate from last year, an agreement relating to previously approved local share municipality grants, a real estate tax refund, an item formalizing the previous separation of adult probation and juvenile probation, and an agreement for legal services relating to an upcoming capital case. We also have 110 additional human service contracts that relate to the end of the state fiscal year of June 30th. We are now very close to being completely done with the hundreds of these contracts we are required to complete by the end of the month. I do have one correction for today's agenda. For item number 16, the agenda lists rates on a per hour basis. After publishing the agenda, CJAB informed us that the rates are actually per unit, which in their contract is equal to 15 minutes. So where it says hour in item number 16, it should instead say unit. Lastly, I wanted to congratulate our very own Matt Owens, county's chief solicitor, who was recently named to the super lawyers list, a distinction honoring the top 5% of attorneys in the state based on independent research and peer evaluations. So they've obviously had a different experience with him than I have. Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none, I'll hand it over to one of the top 5% lawyers in the Commonwealth, Mr. Owens.
Thank you. So much pressure. I have 133 items requiring board action, all of which have been reviewed and approved for the board today.
Great. Any questions of Mr. Owens? All right. Hearing none. We will move on to matters requiring board action. With these items, again, I would like to go through and approve them under the headers. But before we do that, are there any numbers that anyone would like to have pulled out and voted on separately? Any for you? I would like to pull out and vote on number 16 separately. So I'll entertain a motion to begin with for items 1 through 23 minus item 16. So moved. The training packet as well. Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. To item number 16, I'll allow for a motion second prior to my comments.
I'll make a motion for approval of item number 16 on today's packet.
Motion by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. The item before us relates to Geo Group, Geo Reentry Services, a subsidiary of Geo Group. Geo Group is one of the largest for-profit prison operators in the world with a business model fundamentally dependent on mass incarceration and detention. In 2024 alone, Geo Group made 3/4 of a million dollars just from ICE contracts, and in the first quarter of this year, they've made about a quarter of a million dollars. Their CEO publicly described the wave of mass deportations that are in play right now as an unprecedented opportunity. Basically, it's a revenue stream. Individuals experiencing incarceration, deportation are seen as a revenue stream. And while I understand the reentry group might try to separate itself from its parent company, they are both for-profit. They are both part of what I would consider the prison industrial complex that exists in America still today and would argue that this in some ways is seen as reputational laundering when we have Geo's stock sold, you know, on the market and broader business is often more important than the communal needs. Dauphin County has felt the effects of federal ICE enforcement and detention practices, which disproportionately harm immigrant communities, including legal green card holders here in Dauphin County. The Bhutanese Nepali community specifically is one that I've been very close with as they've been detained, many of them despite their legal status, and Geo profits off of our neighbors and their detention in their system. Interestingly enough, if you are detained by ICE here in Dauphin County, it's very likely you will go to Mo Shanon Valley Correction Center, run by Geo Group. The company is also helping operate the migrant operations center at Guantanamo Bay, taking a site that previously only had 130 beds and making it up to a capacity to hold 30,000 individuals. All the while profiting off of that. And the challenge of that particular project is that it's putting people in a place, Guantanamo Bay, where there's no access to attorneys, no due process, no legal transparency. These have all been seen as violations by the ACLU and the International Refugees Assistance Project. They're participating in offshoring. These individuals in offshoring are prisons. Furthermore, their PACs have done considerable questionable things in their way of donations, donating often with a deliberate strategy to serve their desire of mass incarceration and mass deportation because it will ultimately be an advantage to them fiscally. Numerous nonprofits exist right here in Dauphin County. We've, I would prefer us to see a local individual in this, you know, this is a reentry service that we're voting on here with number 16. It would provide, in my opinion, a more culturally competent, potentially more flexible, better able to build community trust than someone, you know, attached to these morally and ethically questionable practices. Just in our last RFP at the prison for reentry services, we had a miracle for sure. Justice Works, Brodego, and Breaking the Chains. Breaking the Chains is on our agenda today for approval. These are all local, much, none of them are traded on the stock market. They're nonprofits. I can't in good conscience emphasize the value of reentry and rehabilitation while partnering with an entity so tied to some of the worst injustices related to incarceration. I want to urge my colleagues to join me in tabling this proposal instead of, and instead exploring local, community-based solutions that serve our region with integrity without being tied to a company entangled in global system of injustice. Is there any openness to reconsidering motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Moving on to our next.
Yeah, certain. Having additional community partners for reentry is something that is critically important, and I think we should recognize community partners, encourage, and support, as I've always done. And, you know, just the announcement by Secretary of Department of Human Services, talking about for the first time, the ability to use Medicaid dollars to both plan for reentry and provide connections to the community post. To keep continuity of Medicaid. So. And that and community-based partner, that's it. Something that I fully support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. We will move on to items 24 through 38. This is items related to the fiscal year contracts for human services around area agency on aging. Do I have a motion for items 24 through 38? Moved by Commissioner Hartwick.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Items 39 through 80, representing fiscal year contracts for human services, mental health, autism, and developmental programs. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Items 81 through 88, fiscal year contracts for human services, human services, 81 through 88. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. State fiscal year contracts for human services, drug and alcohol services, items 89 through 113. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Finally, state fiscal year contracts, human services, children and youth, items 114 through 133. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So we have just approved items 1 through 133. I did fail to reference one thing. On item number 17, I just want to draw attention to item number 17 for the public. As we look at insurance, it is almost always going up. It is almost always something that year after year when we renew, it goes up. Each of these buckets are reductions, and I just want to give a shout out to Sharon and all of her work, working on renewing these and bringing these down, and hopefully that is a trend we continue to see. Thanks for all your efforts in that. We'll move on to former business. I don't see any former business, any new business? Hearing no new business. Commissioners Discussion and Actions. Commissioner Hartwick?
I just want to first thank all of the coordinators for these, the incredible Juneteenth events over the past weekend. I know that both YPOC, the Civic Association, had events down. I think it was the first ever Juneteenth parade, which was an outstanding success run by, I think this era Smallwood was the coordinator. I think it brought out the best in Harrisburg, put on display a great number of community groups and the incredible talent that we have right here in our capital city. As well as tomorrow, I want to wish everybody a happy Juneteenth. Obviously, Dauphin County recognizes it as a holiday. And thank all of the participants, all of the great performers, and all the level of planning that went into putting on those events this weekend. They turned out extraordinary, with great feedback from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. Commissioner Priest?
Yes, I'd just like to take a moment and acknowledge that Commissioner Hartwick and I attended the Visit Hershey-Harrisburg Annual Breakfast Ceremony yesterday and got to speak to a lot of community leaders, as well as Senator Patty Kim, who attended. And it was great to hear from the new president and CEO, Sharon Myers, and her vision and outlook for VHH moving forward. It was very refreshing, and I think she's going to do a wonderful job in that position. I also want to give a shout out to Anthea Stebbins and the team at Parks and Rec for hosting another Well Done, Proudly PA event. Woo woo. Heard a lot of great feedback from that event, even though the weather wasn't the best ever. The event, as usual, was top-notch. So great job to you and your team.
Great job. Great. I want to echo Commissioner Hartwick's statements about Juneteenth. You know, tomorrow, we celebrate Juneteenth, a holiday that Dauphin County celebrates, like our employees have that as a holiday. It's the day in 1865 when word got back to, emancipation finally reached enslaved black Americans in Galveston, Texas. Over two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed, it was a moment of delayed justice, but one that still carried the power of liberation and the hope of a new beginning. And Juneteenth reminds us that freedom in this country has always been fought for, not just simply granted. And so it's a great time for us to not just celebrate, but to also reflect and to also recommit ourselves to the work moving forward. And I'm thankful to be part of a county and thankful to the board previous that made the decision to celebrate it as a holiday. I also want to reference the parade and also thank the mayor's efforts in making that possible. And also, we had a press conference on Monday with YPOC and the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus that I was able to be part of, celebrating Juneteenth, and want to encourage everyone to come out tomorrow at noon to Soldiers and Sailors Grove as YPOC is planning a Juneteenth Jubilee. And for those, we talk in acronyms around here a lot, YPOC is Young Professionals of Color. Just want to make sure everyone understands who they are and give them the attention that they deserve for all the work that they're doing this week. There's many, many Juneteenth celebrations happening around Harrisburg all week. So please, if you go to Young Professional Colors website, or Facebook, or Instagram, you'll be able to see all the great information. Last week, we celebrated Pride Press Conference, and I want to just thank everyone who helped organize that, all the people who put effort and energy into planning, organizing, all those who attended. Also want to thank our LGBTQ+ Committee for their efforts in work and especially thank Sean Doherty for speaking. He was one of the employees that spoke at the gathering. And at the presser, we recognized all their health with the proclamation honoring their service of 40 years here in central Pennsylvania. I wanted to make sure to give him a shout out here as well. Finally, we have a World Refugee Day coming up on Friday, which we will also be having a press conference for at 10:00 a.m. in the lobby just to honor all of our refugees that make Dauphin County great and looking forward to being there and inviting the public to attend as well, if that's something you're interested in attending. All right, moving on on our agenda, we have correspondence. I don't see any listed here, but any correspondence will be provided to the Chief Clerk's Office. Thank you, Vince. For public participation, I have a list in front of me. Just a reminder, we are being livestreamed, and it is a three-minute cap. Antonio Foster is first up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
How you doing? Antonio Foster, 594 Chambers Street. I understand that I'll be coming here with abnormal issues. But you guys are the people that I have to bring these issues to, happen to be the chosen, selected ones. I had something else I wanted to speak about before I came here, but I'm just going to keep it with the Becky Beamer thing right now for something. I just don't, it just doesn't sit well with me. She's a mother. She left a child behind. It's like nobody cares about her closure, and that's not okay. All the bodies that have dropped due to the fat noise, it's not nobody pinned to the bodies. I come with the information to give you guys to help out with the situation, and nobody want the information. My reason for giving this information, it's a method to my madness because I'm being gang stalked by the same people for having it. But nobody wants to, nobody wants to listen, but that doesn't mean I'm not going to continue to be heard. Doesn't mean I'm not going to continue to speak up for these people because they can't speak at all right now. Somebody has to be their voice, and it's just not okay. And I would like, I mean, I would like for you guys to get into the fight with me and understand what I'm saying right here because there's nowhere in the world that it's okay. And we all, we all seen what's going on. I've given the facts. You guys know the facts. You guys are the commissioner. I'm sure you guys know what's going on. There's no way that that's okay. That shouldn't sit well with anybody in this system. There's no way that that can sit well that a family has to come on the news and cry about not being able to see a body that's only drowned? And nobody cares about that family or wants to make sense of it? I don't know if that family stopped fighting, but I'mma still fight for it just because I'm involved in this situation. I gave you evidence last week about concerning my case. I don't know if you guys dug into it or checked into it. But if you did, it's kind of like evident. Just reading the discovery is bad. If you will take five minutes to read the discovery, it won't even sound right to you, and you don't even have to be a lawyer or a judge. It doesn't make sense to the normal citizen reading that discovery. And I would like some help. I would need some, I need some help. That's what I'm coming here for. I'm asking for help because, you know, it needs to be done. It needs, the right things need to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Next up, John Trey Williams.
He's just not going to the right place. He needs to be directed to the folks who can do investigative work. Hey, good morning.
Good morning. My name is John Trey Williams, 2451 Brookwood. Good morning, Commissioners. I thank you for your time. On July 20th, 2022, Dauphin County passed a resolution officially recognizing the Central Pennsylvania Film Commission in partnership with FACS. That resolution acknowledged our role in growing local tourism, building the creative economy, and training a more inclusive workforce. But without actual investment, that resolution remains only symbolic. We cannot deliver on the county's commitment without operational support to scale our impact. Earlier this year, our team met with Commissioner Douglas to advocate for the support to make this effort sustainable, requesting $75,000 for operational costs. Without that support, here's what's at stake. Central PA Film Commission did secure the film tax credit for the upcoming Hershey movie, bringing national attention and production dollars to our region. Without continued support, we may miss future productions and lose economic momentum. In fact, we have already missed some opportunities this year. We also risk falling short on equity commitments as FACS trains BIPOC residents through our direct connect and pro lab programs to fill real jobs in film and production. Our counties understand that Dauphin County, other counties understand that Dauphin County made a commitment to us seeing that there's no follow-through on this commitment undermines the county's credibility. Now, what the $75,000 helped us do, it activates the resolution so that it's not just symbolic. It supports our year-round tourism infrastructure, not just events. It positions Dauphin County as a film-ready destination, and it ensures we can report back with measurable results. To be clear, this is not a one-time ask. This is about building a self-sustaining economic engine, a creative hub for Pennsylvania right here in Daup- a creative hub for Pennsylvania right here in Dolphin County. Each of you individually has expressed support for our work. Commissioner Douglas has told our team that he would back the request as long as we delivered a business plan that supported it, and went a step further suggesting to include a membership fee for the Harrisburg Regional Chamber of Commerce, and there is presented there in front of you. We don't just want your support. We want to honor your vision and stand in your resolution. Let's move forward from symbolic to strategic and make Central PA a national destination for film, workforce, and tourism.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Adrian Selkowitz. I just want to make sure I got that close to right. Sorry if I botched that.
Hi, I'm Adrian Selkowitz. I live here in Harrisburg at 2047 Green Street. Born and raised in Harrisburg, and I met John Trey about a year ago. And I, you know, we both lived in Los Angeles for a long time, worked in the entertainment industry, both moved home and realized that there was something missing here, which was a proper film commission. There was no representation for entertainment organized at the state level or the county level. John Trey stepped up and created, with Dolphin County's support, the Central PA Film Commission. And there's already been a major change in what I've seen as someone working in this industry. And so I, having met him, being very impressed, I decided to try to get involved, because I think we all have a shared vision of bringing more work, more stability, more revenue to our area. So, I just wanted to, I'm here basically to support this whole endeavor and ask for your support to help make sure that the Central Pennsylvania Film Commission can be sustainable. Right now, we are a board of seven hardworking people who have families and jobs, and we're doing our best, but sometimes, you know, the phone rings and we don't have the capacity to be on call and respond in a timely manner. And so we're missing opportunities. One of those opportunities recently was from a pretty major motion picture company in California that called and asked us if we could provide some locations. They wanted a community that put it up against farmland, specifically cornfields. We know we have those. We didn't have the infrastructure to respond in a timely manner, and so that opportunity went away, which was probably like a $5 to $15 million film that would have shot here in our backyards. You know, there are other people calling. We're in talks with, you know, Hallmark, who shoots something like 75 features a year, and they're asking if they can bring that work to Pennsylvania. But in, you know, when we're busy with our day jobs, or John Trey's teaching, or Anwar is, you know, working at his job at Environmental Protection Agency, it's just challenging for us to respond. So, we need this infrastructure support so that we can bring these opportunities in and really make good on the promise of the Film Commission and bring work and everything to the region. I could go on. I have 30 more seconds, but it's, I just want to say I advocate for this strongly, and I think it's been very impressive what John Trey's been able to accomplish with Deanna and the rest of the group over the last four years. So, thank you for hearing me, and I appreciate you guys.
Next up, we have Jean Stilt.
Jean Stilt, Fisher Creek Valley. Thanks for letting me talk to the Commissioners. Last week, I mentioned Dolphin County and the surrounding counties are basically, they basically form sacrifice, a sacrifice zone. Sacrifice only mean that the most poisonous materials are stored there. High-level nuclear waste was never meant to be stored there forever, but is on that trajectory for the last 50 years and way into the future. As I said last week, 700 tons of this highly poisonous waste is already there, and Constellation Energy wants to put another 350 tons there, and this will last forever if we don't do something. This is a form of tyranny, yes, technological tyranny. Tyranny is when you have no say in the matter. You have no say in what this company does. You have no say as to what is down there in the middle of the Sescuan River. Forever sacrifice zones, technological tyranny, show you one thing is missing, the right for any opportunity for citizens to vote for or against what is happening. We are in a dead voting zone, dead voting zone. Way back in '79, someone told me that if you were to have a nuclear accident, Central Pennsylvania would be the best place to have it, because the people here would roll over and accept it as part of life. Well, over the years, I've seen time and time again, folks here roll over and say, what can I do? County Commissioners have a clear opportunity to question the process, question the reality of what is going on, question the citizen, question why the citizens are not having any vote on what's happening down there. A few years ago, even a non-finding resolution opportunity to vote was taken away. Go ahead, two or three generations in your imagination, and when your ancestors and their children look back, and they'll be asking, why did that generation, why did the leadership in that generation let this happen? Don't they have any sense, any foresight, any morals? I'm trying to imbue in you your deeper sense of responsibilities for the future. It's up to you if you want to accept them. So, there you are, new concepts, forever sacrifice zones, technological tyranny, a voting dead zone. It's up to you what you want to do. You can actually accomplish it and turn things around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stilt. That is the end of our list that were signed up for public participation. I'll now open it to the floor. Anyone who maybe didn't get an opportunity to sign up or feels like sharing something publicly.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Mr. Hagerty, Mr. Owens, Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. I didn't sign up because I was going to say this during public comment on agenda items, and then I couldn't find it on the agenda, but specifically item 13, and in talking about GeoGroup, and in specific, talking about the criminal, criminal, criminogenic risk factors. This is something that concerns me greatly. We do not really understand criminogenic mental illness relationships. This has been borne out by some studies. The one that I looked at last night was from Oxford University. We do not understand how it impacts treatment needs, and of ultimate concern, whether this relationship, what this relationship means in terms of an individual and societal outcomes, or even criminality, a future criminality. And this, these risks, this criminogenic risk is being used right now as kind of a cutting edge of the way that we're looking at people who've interacted with the criminal justice system. And there's talk about predicting future criminal behavior. I think that's a pretty slippery slope, because one thing that these risk factors do not take into account are human needs, people who are, the basic needs of people who are in poverty, nor does it really factor in trauma. And that is concerning to me. And then in addition, when we look at the fact that it is GeoGroup, who, as Commissioner Douglas mentioned, is the largest provider, for-profit provider of carceral programs in the world, that is even more concerning to me. Yes, Commissioner Hartwick, I agree that we need more community partners in reentry, but GeoGroup is not a community partner. They are not from here. They do not live here. They do not care about anything that is here. They care only about making money. And I also say this because last week I became aware of two recent students from Harrisburg School District who were picked up by ICE, one of whom is in Mocheanen. This is an 18-year-old who is in Mocheanen. There are some things that one should not make money at, and this is definitely one of those things. Thank you.
Ms. Parsons.
Good morning.
Morning.
Grand Rising. Our wonderful Commissioners. I just want to take a few moments to talk-
Excuse me, could you please state your name for the record?
Kelly Summerford. I just assumed you were no name. I apologize. Kelly Summerford. And I just want to talk about, I didn't have time to get on the list about the Film Commission. I am a 50-year member of Screen Actors Guild, probably the oldest in the county at this point. And I know what it was like when I first started my career as an actor, and I know that, the difficulties that I had. But in 1998, I think it was, they brought a movie here called Distinguished General. I had the opportunity to actually work in my county, to actually work in my hometown, because I was Eddie Murphy's standard. And what that did for me, it gave me a sense of pride in my area, because we have some of the best landscape ever. I am also a certified location manager, and I am looking at some of the places in Dolphin County, Harrisburg, and some of the related areas that are just absolutely fabulous. And even back then, Commissioners, they were talking about if they had to move Hollywood, they wanted to move it to Pennsylvania. We have an opportunity here today. We have an opportunity here. When I met John Trey, he was young, fresh, and he had the ideas that I'd never thought of, and he made them come to fruition. I mean, the things that he has accomplished in these few years, I mean, actually putting a film commission together in this county was something I would never think of doing, because I wouldn't think that I had the know-how to do that. But he was able to do that. You know, let's not take away, let's add to. You know, there are, there are young people, including my son, who's interested in entertainment, who's interested in film. I know for a fact that if we help the Film Commission, I promise you, it will make such a huge difference, not only to, for young people, also people like myself, who I think is over the hill now in terms of working in films, but just having the opportunity to, to work in an industry that we thought was so far away from us. I am pleading with you guys that let's make this the best film commission in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And I promise you, if we do that, Hollywood will look at us. If you do that, international people will look at us. They will, they will see that we have the kind of love to make things happen. You know, I'm passionate about this. One minute. I'm passionate about this because I know what it can do. So, I plead with you Commissioners, please support the Film Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public participation?
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Morning.
My name is Lauren Hanser. May all be familiar with that last name. So, last Wednesday, at the previous Joint Commissioners Meeting, the CEO of Connections Health Solutions painted a romanticized and absolutely inaccurate picture of the facility. She talked about the quote-unquote value of teamwork between the facility and neighboring counties, as well as the need to debrief with every department, the importance of mental health, and how proud of everyone there she was, and this couldn't be further from the truth. As a former short-term employee of Connections from February 18th, 2025 to May 9th, 2025, said facility is everything but supportive of not only the citizens of the counties it serves, but even more so of its employees. Contrary to the false narrative that Connections as of recently has attempted to paint about me, not only have I always been a huge advocate of mental health, even more so after becoming a single mother of an autistic, non-verbal child, but I've also stood on the front lines of change and activism for marginalized and oppressed communities like the ones in which Connections is supposed to serve. So, please explain to me, Joint Commissioners, how the same people who refer to patients that come through this facility, through your gracious funding and advocacy, as, and excuse my language, I'm just saying this verbatim, druggies, junkies, criminals, and the R-word, should be entrusted with the ability to care for and help them in crises. Explain to me how the employees there not only get promotions and raises that don't have any medical, psychiatric, or healthcare experience, but they themselves add on to the debilitating state of the community's mental health, as well as their employees through acts of workplace and lateral violence, retaliation, and bullying. I plead with you all today to look into the extremely high turnover rate, the culture of the facility, and those who have been placed into leadership there as where there is smoke, there is true fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to encourage you to connect with Randy Jaeger, our Director of Human Services. She's going to raise her hand before you leave today, if that's possible. I think a good connection to make. Anyone else for public comment?
Well, I wanted, I just wanted to say-
Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joyce Vanderhorst, Vanderhorst Gamble. I reside at 2908 Parkside Lane, and I just want to reiterate, I used to be employee at Connections Health Solution, and I can tell you, and I agree with Lauren in regards to the treatment of the employees there. I have filed, I have filed a human rights discrimination complaint against them, because the way they treat their employees is abhorable. The way they treat their clients that have mental health issues is unacceptable. For example, they, there's no compassion. And I know when we, I know that dealing with mental health, there is a thin line, but my main concern was to try to keep, meet them where they're at, try to calm down the situation, try to de-escalate the situation, make them, their 48 hours be there where they can just try to regroup, get back to reality if they're strung out on crack drugs or alcohol or whatever. But the support, I had no support from some of my employees. It seems as though they have like a certain clique there, and you're hired, and then three or four months later, you're fired for insubordination or something minor. The concerns for the employees and for the clients are questionable, and I suggest that the Commissioners' office please investigate what's going on with Connections Health Solution. I, for one, was 100% for them to come into the community and to work as a 24-hour crisis intervention. I did go out fly as, I did advocate for them. As you know, I do go out in the community. I was a former Camp Curt and Neighborhood United President of it. I am the Harrisburg Evangelist. I do carry my cross, and I do take my religion very seriously and my spiritual walk very seriously. I also brought this into the workplace, whereas some of the clients would come in and with their prayer books and ask for some type of spiritual guidance. I was dismissed for an insubordination, which I don't even know why I was dismissed. I was doing everything that I was told to do. I even worked with Lauren in trying to calm the patient down for two hours, walking him around the unit just to calm him down, so that there would be peace, so we won't have to do a safe link on him. These is, I just would like for you just to really look into what's going on. I don't want it to go away, but it needs to be improved. Thank you for your time and effort.
Good to see you. Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Ms. Phillips, how are you?
Good morning. Wow, start that again. Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. I'm here today not to ask you for anything.
He's going to ask for your name.
Excuse me, ma'am. Could you please state your name for the record? Thank you.
I'm Solzbenin Swater Township. I'm not here to ask for anything. I'm here to thank you. So often, you don't get thanks, but I'm here to thank you today for your support, for all that you've done and all that you're doing in the community. And I'm here on behalf of ACI Entertainment. I want to say thank you for your support. And I welcome you to come and be a participant in the festival that we're going to be doing September the 19th and the 20th. So, that's why I'm here today to say thank you so very much. I know I've called each one of you and left you a message, but I want to publicly thank the three of you together.
And that's the African Heritage Festival?
Yes. Yes. So, thank you again for, for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Appreciate you.
Surprise, surprise.
Anyone else for public comment?
Honorable Ruth O'Sai, Swatara Township. Good to see you guys again. Can't help but notice there were some glum faces up here today. And I'm wondering if it's the shame for voting for GeoGroup that comes across your, across your faces. That is money that is going outside of our community, just as has been said. It's not by any people who know or understand our community. It's their sole mission is profit. They don't care about us, and it makes zero sense that we're giving them money. Every time we have given corporations money for things like reentry, for things like prison healthcare, it always bites us. And it bites us because for-profit companies do not care about us. An article in Penn Life Today explains that "Prime Care Did Not Deliver The Services That It Was Contracted To Deliver" for psychological and psychiatric care for people who are incarcerated inside of Dolphin County Prison. That lack of care has led not only to at least one suicide that we know of inside the jail, it has led to countless other issues, people who do not have the healthcare that they need and deserve inside of that jail. Yet, we still pay prime care for those services. And not only did we pay them, when we know that they did not provide services that we were paid for, we did not claw our money back. We decided to let that company keep that profit. And by "we," I mean the people we voted for that have a say, who are sitting right up here in front of us today. That money, hundreds of thousands of, at least $100,000 that I know of, we're talking about $75,000 for a film commission that could actually benefit our community, that we can't pay for because we are overpaying private companies to neglect our residents, residents who these Commissioners all have a duty to ensure their safety and their care. It is a shame. It is also Juneteenth tomorrow, and let us not forget that we are not yet all free. So, tomorrow, as we do every year, we will be having a loving action gathering at Dolphin County Prison at 3:00 PM, where we will remember that those of, there are those of us who are still not free. And hopefully, folks come out as a community and continue to do the work we need to ensure that all of us can be free and can be safe. Because while that jail is operating as it is, none of us are really free, and none of us are really safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable. Anyone else for public comment? Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Film Commission at this point. I've been on the advisory board of the Film Commission, and I know that the Film Commission is doing great work in this area, and we need to support the Film Commission. And so, I'm here today to ask you to lend your support to the Film Commission and John Trey Williams and the great work that they're doing. I know that he has been successful in getting a tax credit for the Hershey Project, which brings in money to the community. And I think it was over $33 million, if I'm not mistaken. And that's a whole lot of money. And also, it also brings in tourism, and that's what we're here about, bringing in tourism. So, I just want to speak on behalf of the Film Commission today and ask for your support for the Film Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Morning. How's everybody doing? Honorable Curtis, just Swatara Township. I won't be long. I just wanted to speak also on behalf of FACS and the Film Commission. In 2012, I started my journey doing things here in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. And also, I had a vision of the thing I was doing, which was the Harrisburg Music Festival, expanding that beyond just the city limits. And shortly after that, I would present a five-year plan to my peers and who I was hoping would be mentors. And through that journey, everybody would ask me, "Why do you even have a five-year plan?" And it became a little discouraging. I didn't stop the work, but, you know, just working to figure out how to navigate. And then, in 2021, I was fortunate enough to reconnect with John Trey, who, we grew up in the same neighborhood. He's a little older than me, but, you know, that's cool. And through his brotherhood, his friendship, and also his mentorship, it has really helped me to navigate and figure out how to manifest what I want to do, what I would like to do, which also would be to create opportunities. And that, to me, working with John Trey, the board, FACS board, and the Film, Central Pennsylvania Film Commission, just understanding how to create real opportunities and not just run off the hip with an idea and, you know, crash out, has really, really benefited me. And I know that it has benefited a number of other individuals younger than me and also older than me. So, I do want to come here. I do want to thank you all for your support, you know, up until now, and also asking to continue to support the Central Pennsylvania Film Commission because it, I really believe that it's going to make Central Pennsylvania, not just Harrisburg, but Central Pennsylvania, the attraction that this beautiful area deserves to be. So, I just wanted to come and just want to share that with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All entertainment motion for adjournment.
Summed.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. We are adjourned.